Good evening. My name is Bill Roth. You're here for the Route 27 forum. It's our second forum. We have Sukanya in Genoa, which is from our regional planning agency, which is the MAPC. Tonight is going to be... There's a lot of slides, actually. So I think there's 40-some, 40-some-odd slides going over everything. So it's a lot to digest. There's going to be recommendations. But what I wanted to do is start out and let everyone know is we're not rezoning anything. We're, you know, everyone comes to these meetings. We're not proposing, you know... This is not a meeting where we're going to rezone it. This is a meeting in saying, "We've had these surveys. We've had this first meeting. Here are what we would recommend. What are your opinions and what are your thoughts? We're going to then take that back because there's an online survey and then finalize those and then go to the planning board." But, you know, we want it to be very clear that this is still a process for public input and what we're doing and, you know, where we're moving forward. So with that, I will turn it over and then we will have the slides up. And did you want people to ask during the slide presentation or after?
We have a Q&amp;A question.
Okay. We have halfway... Through several portions, we have question and answers after a certain number of slides and then we'll go to the next thing in a certain number of slides. So that's kind of where we are. And thank you for your patience. It will be a little longer today because it is a lot of information to digest.
Thank you, Bill. Hello, everyone. I'm Sukanya Sharma.
You have to have that up there.
Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Sukanya Sharma and I'm joined by my colleague, Jivon. And we are here to present, as Bill said, about some of the proposed recommendations that we have. As he mentioned, this is not a meeting where we decide to rezone anything. But we hope that we'll be able to reflect some of the feedback that we heard from the last time and based on the outreach that we did, it would be helpful to sort of report back, I think, and be transparent about everything that we are doing to make sure that these proposed recommendations meet the vision that we have heard throughout our engagement. So with that, the first slide is just an agenda. So housekeeping, as Bill mentioned, we'll have questions throughout the meeting. For folks who are online, there is a link to a survey in the chat so they can, as we progress through the presentation, they can answer questions through that survey. And folks who are in the room, of course, have a paper survey that they can fill. Your feedback is very important, so please feel free to share that survey with residents and please add any comments you might have and elaborate on those things. So we'll be giving a brief project overview as to where we are in the process and outreach synthesis of what we heard in the past public forum. But at the same time, we gave a much more detailed presentation to the planning board in February, which had more information on the outreach synthesis and feedback we got from the survey, all the numbers and data that you should be able to access on our project webpage. And then we'll get into the zoning alternatives and next steps. And hopefully, the cookies will help with the long meeting that we have ahead, but I really hope that you engage and give us your feedback. Next slide, please. So we are here. We did the first forum and now we are in March, second forum. Ahead, in April, we'll be working on draft recommendations after taking this feedback that we get from this forum and the survey we circulate. And then May is when we report back to the planning board and present our recommendations. Next slide, please. So what happens once we give our recommendations? We present to the planning board. We, of course, will hear their comments and respond and incorporate that feedback. And in June, we hope to submit a report with everything in that, stuff that we did throughout the process. Following that, this work is where the MAPC will be stopping that work there, but town will take that work forward. So there will be public meetings and town vote that will happen in due time as the town is able to take on this work and move forward. And there'll be, of course, more opportunities to tweak it, make this work for folks who... For folks in general and the study area. So there is a separate town public hearing and town vote process that lies after the work that we finish. So we are at the scenario development stage, basically giving you all sorts of strategies and options we have to achieve the goals we heard from the public forum. One, we don't need to implement all of the strategies we have, we'll present today. It's... Think of it as a menu that we have to achieve some of the goals we identified. And in terms of stakeholders and outreach methods, we covered this in our last forum, but just want to make sure that we provide an update as to where we are with the outreach, which is in the second... In the slide after this. So in terms of outreach updates, we've been trying to meet one-on-one and conduct interviews as much as we can. We met with the Old Colony Planning Transportation Colony Council, which has a dedicated transportation team who has a lot of experience working in this corridor and were able to learn more about past projects, previous plans. We also met with Housing Authority Chair and local real estate experts and past or former town planners, all folks who are local experts who know this town and the developments and the zoning. And then we also met residents and property owners. We also received a request from the Carter Group and written comments to... And written comments, which was helpful feedback. And we tried to sort of address those as much as we can through our recommendations. I'm wondering if we can go to the next slide?
[laughing]
No worries. So I know what the next slide says. So it basically gives information on what we heard from these experts. Of course, property owners and residents want to appreciate their property and want more property value to go. We were able to also get a go higher. We were also able to get some historical context of the study area, how the zoning came to be. And then from real estate experts and land use permitting point of view, we got more information on what things are working within a bylaw, about issues with the flexible development, about how NB and GB are set up as the zoning districts in the area, dimensional tables and things like that. So a lot of information from them. And then, of course, the transportation bit. We discussed about many potential studies and projects that could benefit the corridor, including ADA retrofit of infill sidewalks, so half of the corridor does not have sidewalks. And that is critical if we want future developments to come on the other side of the road. Bus stop vulnerability assessments, safety audits, potential bike path, installation of crosswalks and other curb management techniques. So basically, a lot of studies and projects that can benefit this work. And then I want to actually call on Jivon to talk about the survey that we did in the public forum first.
Thank you. I'm going to provide a very brief overview of the survey that we did to engage public and get your feedback on our initial findings. So the survey was open for 21 days, from January 24th to February 14th. We got 57 responses through paper and online survey. Next slide. So this is not... There is a more detailed analysis of the survey that we provided to the planning board and more detailed analysis will be included in the report, but we included some of the key questions we asked to public. So first question was, "Please rank the recommendation from the previous plan." So we provided eight key previous plan recommendations from Stoughton Master Plan, Stoughton Economic Development Plan, Stoughton Housing Production Plan and Open Space and Recreation Plan. And so we asked people to rank this recommendation, eight being the most important and one being the least important, and we got 29 responses. And through the analysis process, we thought people think that each option is important when they ranked each option from eight to five. So based on that, enhancing the image of Stoughton through design guidance got, you know, 82% of people saying that it's very important. You know, providing adequate access to open space and recreational spaces got 61% of support. And as you go down, you know, 45% of people said support of the mix of housing types is important. But what is interesting here, too, is that, you know, 28% of people said support of the mix of housing types is the least important. So we can also identify, you know, a little bit of diverging opinion on housing front. Next slide. So next question was, "What do you think should be considered as priority to improve Route 27?" And we got 29 responses. And we asked, in this case, one being the most important, four being the least important. So based on that, 69% of people said that it's important to optimize use of vacant and publicly owned land. And 48% of people said expanding housing types and mixed-use options and moderate density is important. And you can also see the importance of other options as well. Moving on to the next slide. So the third question was, "What kind of uses would you like to see in the study area in the future?" And we got 27 responses. And how we analyze this question is that in each comment, we kind of codify the major theme that emerged in each comment and then categorize as residential, commercial, mixed-use, recreational, infrastructure, open space and others. And we got a lot of comments on residential uses. So as you can see, 10 comments were about senior housing and eight comments included multifamily, six comments included market rate housing, four comments included apartments. And you can also see for commercial, six comments included retails, four restaurants. And also, you can see five mixed-use comments as well. Next slide. So this is open text responses. We asked, "Do you have any final comments?" So that people can express their feedback more freely without needing to select one or two options. So we got a lot of comments, 20 responses. And I'll just read one of the comments that really stood out to us was that lot size, density, height, open space and amount of development need to be addressed and lack of senior housing. It took 10 years to get the sewer down from Route 27 and into the industrial park. Need to maximize return. Town needs taxes. And like, there are also other relevant comments, including, you know, housing needs and, you know, improving park and intersection. But also, there are some comments like, "Don't increase density of the lots" and, you know, certain comments around what density is suitable for the area as well. Next slide. So from here, we are going to provide some of our initial recommendation based on the engagement that we did so far. So the methodology is basically taking into account the survey results, document audits and some of the GIS geographic analysis, as well as some qualitative analysis such as interview with the stakeholders, as Sukanya introduced, and, you know, discussion with the local experts and case studies of the peer communities, such as Canton and Sharon and many other peer communities. And some of the framework that we consider is basically focusing on zoning recommendations and developing guiding vision for this area and developing some of the scenarios that we can consider on the way. And also developing design guidelines to, you know, properly guide the development in the future. And also recognizing other areas that are very important, such as transportation and public realm and others. And I will turn it over to Sukanya.
Great. We are going to tag team throughout so that you don't get bored with the same voice throughout for the long presentation. So before we start diving into the zoning recommendations, we want to also give a note about the context and about the transportation recommendations specifically. This is a zoning study and we cannot undertake or undertake some of these transportation studies that we have identified, but we can certainly recommend those as part of our report, which the town can consider in the future. And we recognize that having transportation work with the existing zoning and the land use is critical and both need to work together to get to the vision that we want. So just the zoning regulations will not alone solve the problem and revitalize or activate some of the underutilized or vacant land. It will have to be complemented by having crosswalks and sidewalks and possibly bike infrastructure. So transportation is very important and there are some studies that we have initially identified that we want to include as recommendations. And of course, not all can be done at the same time, but this can move the needle forward when it comes to threading that zoning and transportation balance. They also tried to identify incentives that can actually help the town find funds and also identify focus areas for public realm improvement. There are areas here which do not have sidewalks, but there are also areas that can benefit from public benches or ADA accessibility. And closer to RK Plaza, I actually want to go into that detail slightly later, but these are public realm improvements that we are looking at and density and use changes can sometimes incentivize that through developers. So in the next slide, I'm getting into the draft zoning now. This map shows the focus areas. The blue in this map is the area that we want to identify as the key nodes that our recommendations will be for. We're not touching any parcels other than these. And the one that is hatched is a parcel that's pending. We still need to do a bit more study to understand if this can be included. But there are a few more parcels that we can potentially consider ensuring they conform to the actual use that is on ground, like, for example, some of the industrial parcels up closer to the... Right beside the trailer park between Trailer Park and Church, it's industrial but has mostly office. So those are things that already exist on the ground. So conforming them to like, this could be neighborhood, neighborhood district instead of industrial is something that we are considering. But other than that, all our recommendations that we discussed today are going to focus on that blue parcel, which is the RK Plaza, a part of the church, not all of it, because the church parcel is actually zoned, is split. Half of it or like, one-third of it almost is zoned GB and the other is zoned residential. And so we are not taking all of the church parcel as into our consideration when we are giving our proposed draft recommendations, just the portion that is GB. And then all the NB parcels or the neighborhood business district parcels on the other side, right before Park Ave. So that includes the Burger King, the diner, the greenhouse, all those properties. So those are the sort of parcels we are concentrating on. We're calling it the RK Plaza node. So as we focus on recommendations today, we'll be giving recommendations for that node and then this other node on this other side, which is towards Ash Street, which is the empty parcel on one side opposite to the Party City Lot and then Party City Lot and the two parcels beside it. So that blue patch, which is, I think, around 7.5 acres, that's the other node that we are concentrating on for our recommendations today. So again, reiterating slightly from a different view, but these are the two nodes that we'll focus on and some of the observations we had heard and after our technical analysis. These are some of the observations that we are sort of trying to get at when we are giving recommendations. We found that there were some insufficient regulations for mixed-use development in these areas. So if someone wants to have storefronts in the front and some residential at the back or storefronts on the ground floor and then residential on the top floor, such development or office, these are developments that are not feasible currently based on the zoning because either it's by special permit or there are not enough guidance around how to build that mixed use. So those were some... Then there's absence of some of the design guidelines. So currently, we don't, for example, require folks to park at the back of the lot and instead have like, we can have parking in the front sometimes, which could be, which could deactivate the front. But like, if it's, if the storefront is closer to the street, it will keep it active. It'll have some vitality, eyes on the street. So such guidelines are missing, which we can sort of suggest through this process. Senior multifamily housing is currently restricted to be developed as... Developed and operated by town only. We think that this could be open to private developers as well, so that more senior housing comes into the town, which is very much needed. There are no or inadequate provisions for two or multifamily development within the current zoning in most of these districts and excessive dimensional restrictions in the residential zone. And then there is, there are some inadequate or insufficient incentives for promoting neighborhood businesses or mixed-use redevelopment of vacant properties as well. So some of the background that we took. So we came to then a vision or a goal. So all the recommendations that I'll... Or the strategies, these are proposed, not all strategies have to be implemented. These strategies are based on these goals that were guided by the public feedback and by technical analysis. For RK Plaza, there is a different set of vision because it's a different kind of node. It's more commercial. For Ash Street node, it is a different kind of vision because it's more residential. So we want to make sure that we respond to the commercial nature and the residential nature separately, instead of just combining all the information. So for the RK Plaza vision, we think that promoting a blend of complementary land uses could lead to more vibrancy. It can permit new potentially mixed-use projects with flexible site layouts and that can adapt to some of the market shifts that we are seeing. It can support some compact moderately dense development to optimize land use and ensure alignment with past planned suggestions. That said, if there is wetlands there or preserved open space or protected open space, we cannot touch those. Like, these recommendations don't override those protections. If wetlands cannot be constructed upon is something that is a law already existing as part of an act within the town and that is not something that will change. Similar visions in the Ash Street node, but because it's more residential thinking about combinations of, again, getting at social vitality because there are vacant or underutilized lots, I think the Party City Lot is an example. There is infrastructure there. There's sewer expansion happening and which the properties already have access to sewer. So they could potentially benefit from that if these zoning recommendations can play a role in guiding development into what we want. That can probably be a better solution for these areas than some development that happens without input, without the input from the public who live in that area. So we hope that these visions get at that and then enhancing mixed use and possibilities of moderate densities is another focus here. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jivon to talk about the strategies.
Yeah. Just to change voice a little bit, I'm going to talk about some of the strategies that we develop. We'll dive into the details of each suggestions and strategies going forward, but I'm going to provide a little bit of review of how we came to develop the strategies. So Sukanya introduced some of the goals for each node, for both RK Plaza node and for Ash Street node. So starting with the RK Plaza node on this slide, so we had a goal of making it easier to develop mixed-use buildings. And the strategy to do that is to allow mixed use by right. And also, for now, in the business zones, mixed-use development is permitted by special permit, but to provide easier paths to build mixed use, we are proposing to allow mixed use by right and also reducing some of the dimensional requirements to realize the redevelopment potential. And the second goal of ensuring a balanced mix of uses and a mixed-use development, kind of make sure that different uses are harmonized in one development in a cohesive way. We are trying to define the permitted and prohibited non-residential uses in the mixed-use buildings because this uses have a lot of impact on the residential portion of the mixed-use development. And also setting some limitations on the personages of certain uses relative to other uses so that different uses can coexist in development. And also increasing walkability by activating the street frontage, so kind of requiring commercial spaces on the ground floor that is abiding the public road so that streets can be activated and people can have access to those commercial spaces as well. Reducing some of the parking requirements for mixed use because in the current zoning bylaw, it is calculated as some of the all uses in the development, but we think that this is, this could be excessive for developers. And so we propose reducing parking requirements by considering different peak demand uses of different use, peak demand, parking demands of different uses and also considering the possibility of having shared parking between different uses. And also promoting compact development, so making development more clustered so that they're easily accessible for pedestrians and have easier access to shared parking areas. For Ash Street nodes, which has more residential nature, we... One of the goals was to expand housing options. To do that, we are proposing to consider allowing two-family by right and multifamily by special permit. And also providing some regulations around density to actually guide a development that can be, you know, well contextualized in the existing context. And also consider some of the using, actually using flexible development regulations to provide more flexibility for development and allowing private developers to build senior housing and allow senior housing by special permit. This mixed-use development components is kind of shared between RK Plaza and Ash Street nodes. So basically, you know, allow mixed use, mixed use by special permit, which is kind of different from commercial node, which we suggested allowing mixed use by right. So we have more regulations and permitting process involved for residential nodes because this can have impact on surrounding residential area. And also defining the permitted and prohibited non-residential uses and also, you know, setting limitations on personages of certain uses relative to others. Also, we'll dive into more the details of dimensional requirement changes, but we are also proposing changing some of the dimensional requirements to reflect the existing conditions and also kind of considering desired development in the future. Lastly, improving public realm through incentives, so, you know, encouraging mixed use and also potentially providing incentives like density bonuses when private developers contribute to enhancing the public realm and public spaces. So we'll pause quickly here and go into the poll section. So feel free to fill out your paper survey and people on the online, feel free to fill out the link that was provided on the chat. So we're asking, "Do these goals and focus area align with your vision for the study area?" So there are options like yes, yes, mostly, not at all. And if you have any additional comment, please provide any comments for this question.
It'd be great if you can write your comments, but we...
Yeah. You're on the line.
Oh. Sorry.
It'll be great if you can write down your comments, if you have any specific comments, but we can spend a minute or two in hearing if, any comments in the room, if there are any specific inputs.
I think it was slide 17. Yes. Yes. I've actually got my own mic. On slide 17, you have a proposed pending parcel.
Yes.
And I've mentioned, I think I mentioned previous, that has just been sold for development, but as far as I know, nothing's been submitted, although the developer seems to be more interested, well, it's residentially zoned, so I would assume that the owner is more interested in developing residences. When you use the word multi...
Mixed use.
No, mixed use, I understand, on the housing, instead of say a two-family house, most of it...
The first floor and the second floor. What about duplexes side by side?
Yeah.
So that they take up more space on the surface.
But I think, especially in the Ash Street area, where it's virtually all single-family homes, I think you'd have more stakeholders willing to go with duplexes which are, you know, side by side, they could potentially be two-family, or they may be, you know, a brother's family on one side, sister's family on the other side. We have duplexes around town here and there. I think, I don't, I don't know enough about real estate to know if it's cheap, I think it's actually cheaper to build a two-family that's like this rather than like this. I just think that people would be more accepting if they think that the roof, say the roof height is similar to their own, although there's many homes there that have two stories. It really is, that neighborhood grew up bit by bit. There wasn't really a developer who came in and built those houses. As you drive down around, you notice many of them are remarkably different. I just think there's folks in town that are disturbed when they, when they see anything over, anything over five floors in Stoughton, even in the square, is screaming and yelling. There's something about height that bothers people. But as I said, the Ash Street area is so residential. Now, when you go into the RK Plaza, most of that was farmland and it was sold and it was zoned commercial and things, things grew up. So there's a lot of businesses down there. Folks are a little more used to a business use. Personally, Stoughton Square was, Stoughton Square when I was a kid, there was a lot of first-floor business, second-floor residential. And most folks didn't have a huge problem with that. Maybe they do now. What I like about that is even when the store is, the first floor is closed, there, there's people there.
Right.
It's, it's not a people desert after 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM or even 9:00 PM. And I think living above a store is, it used to be, the reason people did it was cheaper.
Right.
The trouble with that for, if you are talking about senior housing, obviously anything over one floor has to have an elevator and that's a substantial cost. But personally, as a senior, the fact that there are 5,000 people waiting for senior housing in Stoughton, that's 16% of the population and we're not getting any younger. Houses in Stoughton have become so expensive that you can either have children and buy a house. They're mutually exclusive. People with small children find very few properties in Stoughton that they can afford to live in. So that's just one thing I think of.
Thank you, really helpful comments. Just one, one thing I wanted to clarify here was, as you said, Cynthia, development will never be fully empty at night or on, say, sometimes weekends if it's an office building, which is a benefit of mixed use. One flexibility we are ensuring we incorporate here is not just mixed use which is vertical, which is like, ground floor is storefronts and everything is up on the residential floor. We are also thinking that it would be helpful to have the flexibility of storefronts in the front and then at the back there can be residential way inside the parcel as well with pedestrian ways to access. So it's not just one big building, it could be a horizontal mixed use as well.
There are pictures.
Right, yeah. So there are helpful pictures hopefully to get at.
Yeah, and we'll go through some of that. And I think some of the development you're talking about, when you talk about the two-family, you're thinking of a double, you know, I wouldn't say triple-decker, that's a three-family, but up and down. I think you're really saying, what I feel I hear you saying is what I consider townhouse style development, where it's two or three together and, and, you know, they're individual units, they're not above. So, you know, we can kind of, yes, they're side by side, so it's, it's what they call townhouse style.
I think there are some pictures as we progress through the presentation as well.
On Park Street, as you leave the square, that's what those are, mostly it's side by side.
Yes.
Two floors for each apartment.
Correct, yes.
And then later on, the town with the cut on even the smaller, so it's two here and two here.
Yeah.
But that's the way it works.
Right, okay.
It's a kind of housing we have, Cynthia.
Okay. We want to continue with the questions?
Peter, I'll, I'll make sure that we get back to you, but can we progress a little bit? We also have an open Q and A section, but towards the end where we openly, like we, which can be talked, we can talk about any slide, but we are hoping these poll questions are focused more on the slides we present previously. So there's...
Yeah. Real quick, has RK requested any of this development on their property?
No, we're just, we're just, this is a, this is a theoretical planning study to look at that and, and what the potential redevelopment of that site, you know, there's a life expectancy, zoning looks 20, 30 years down the road. There's a life expectancy of shopping plazas and various things and, you know, allowing and to have them keep what they have now, but, you know, the option to look at redeveloping within that footprint is what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
So, and there are two more questions also.
Yes.
So I just put up the second question and those who are online in the chat, there was the link to the survey to the questions.
So are there any specific goals you strongly agree or disagree with? If so, which ones and why? Please elaborate. And as everyone feels that, Peter, I just wanted to also respond that the idea of focusing on these nodes was because there was this general nature of that area that was coming up. We, we never set out to change all the zoning throughout the study area, it was more to have a context and we think there is a lot of opportunity there. There is, there are some empty, some vacant portions, vacant lots within that node and then some which are underutilized or does not necessarily conform, conform with some of the surrounding areas. And if those were, say, lively street fronts, there'll be more, more folks will come and spend their dollars in these businesses, more people can live around, property values will appreciate in the surrounding areas, everyone sort of benefits from such developments instead of something that does not have a sidewalk, you don't even know what use there is inside in a certain business and it is potentially serving neighborhood. So, okay, so we'll move to the next poll, we have one more question to go. Are there any additional strategies you would like to see? Please leave comments here. As I mentioned that towards the end of the presentation, we'll have an open discussion, so you are welcome to bring up those as well and discuss in the forum. So maybe 30 more seconds?
Please.
Or a minute?
You can fill them out while we're, we're gonna go on to the next section.
Okay. In the interest of time, since we have a lot to go through. So this is where we get to some of the meat of the conversation. On the top right, you'll see we say RK Plaza node, so everything we have talked about here is about that node, not Ash Street node. So for RK Plaza node, as Jivon had said, one of the goal is to make it easier to develop mixed use, which can allow developers to make it feasible to develop something when you have some housing component. There are other uses that are allowed in this area as well, this, we're not just making it just a mixed use area, but we are allowing mixed use here. Currently, it is by special permit in the zoning, but we are proposing to allow it by right. So currently both GB and NB allow mixed use by special permit and we are allowing it by right. These mixed use development can integrate residential, commercial, office and provide some economic diversity. These does not, do not have to be a building with a vertical mixed use, these can be horizontal as I mentioned earlier, can lead to thriving businesses, increased revenue and job opportunities and repurpose some of the vacant, underutilized land. So of course, everything that is existing now will be allowed and conforming, but if something is non-conforming after a certain change, that does not make it illegal because the zoning came afterwards, but still, just wanted to clarify. And then here is where we really need to temperature check and see what you feel. Dimensional regulations. Currently, the minimum lot size for the parcels within these districts are 10,000 square feet, which we are proposing, we think it would be better to reduce it further to 7,500 so that developers can even more benefit from some of the existing parcels. This will also allow all parcels currently in this area to be conforming because there are some parcels that are not conforming currently to this minimum lot requirement. Then, then building coverage, we are suggesting increase it modestly from 50 to 60%. Max height from 2.55 floors to 3.5 or 45 feet, whichever is lower with gabled roof. So that 0.5 floor is actually a gable that comes out and not necessarily a whole new floor. That's one floor increase that we are suggesting. Again, all these things don't have to be something that we propose, it's something that we think could benefit the mixed use that we are trying to bring in, that will bring in the vitality. Front yard, it was 15 feet. We recommend bringing it down to a range of minimum five feet and maximum 10 feet. This will ensure that the developments are closer to the sidewalk or the road, that will again activate the street front instead of something far back and the area not having that activity. This would be something that will be closer to the road, it'll have eyes on street based from safety, pedestrian access, all points of view. And then we are not recommending and changing any of the side yard, rear yard or open space requirements. So these are some of the dimensional requirements. Please hold your thoughts about what you, the reactions you have and please feel free to input those when we come to the poll question for this. As, in the next slide, this is the poll question, I guess. So do you have any concerns regarding the proposed dimension requirements? And if you, if yes, please elaborate. It'll be helpful for us to know specifically which one is more difficult, that way we can adjust even more and tweak accordingly, but yeah, please take a few seconds to respond. So as you note that down, next slide please. For, again, with this, we are talking about RK Plaza. This is perhaps a real world example that we wanted to highlight that could show some of the success that we, we are envisioning. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, back to dimensional requirements. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry about that. On the section on dimensional requirements, I just had a question on the mixed use development. You know, I've seen, not just in, in Stoughton but in other towns, mixed use development, you know, the project will go to the planning board and there's no really clear direction on how, how many square feet should be used for that mixed use development. And I think that sometimes people take advantage of that and they might put like a ATM machine in there and take up a little space in it. And if that's the intent, you know, I'm thinking if you're doing a mixed use development, why not have a percentage and part of that first floor could be residential for someone who's handicapped or disabled or a senior citizen and they could be one of those units on that level with the mixed use development, you know, if you did it in a percentage.
That's an excellent input. We, I'm so proud that we have actually sort of accounted for that and as we progress, we'll be able to sort of get at what that says, but I agree that it, to ensure that it actually remains a storefront and remains active, we have to make sure that the zoning sort of requires some of it so that people don't get away with ATM kiosks and just that's the commercial component and then everything is residential because that's where the fund, like the money is, I guess. So those requirements are definitely something that we have sort of included. So this is what success could look like, this slide, this is from Milis, its centennial place, a development. That is what it used to look like on the left, after an economic overlay which allowed mixed use, that's what it looked like, that what, that's what it looks like now. Just to ensure, if you understand, that's almost L shape. The front portion, which you can see a more zoomed in version on the left within the after footage, is what fronts this street with some residential, sorry, with some commercial and then there is residential along on the ground floor throughout and then there is, sorry, commercial along the ground floor and residential on the top. And it's two and a half floors, that gabled structures are actually the half floor that we talk about. So this is something that we wanted to sort of highlight as to, this would be nice to have in the, in that area, which could help with the vitality and all the things that we identified in the vision. So moving forward, we have a question for you. Please look at these pictures and rank them in order of your preference. So if you say, if I like C, I'd rank C and then just for example, CABD or DCAB, these would give us an idea of what kind of development you're preferring over other. As you'll note that these are different kinds, like some have gabled roofs, pitched roofs, some have flat tops, some have some pedestrian sort of infrastructure to them or green space and some are very close to the street, some are slightly further back. The D1, for example, has some area for folks to sit on outdoor seating. So these are different kinds of developments and it would be great if you could rank them in your preference. So the first one is the most preferred and the last one would be the least preferred. Go ahead.
On picture D, I noticed it looks like there's outside seating, right? And one of the things that COVID actually brought out is nowadays people like to sit outside and eat. So when you start to do some of this development on the first floor, you want to encourage that because one of the things that brings people in is the smell of garlic. When they smell food, they want to come into the business.
Yeah, or coffee in my case, but I, I agree. So I guess, in terms of tools that we'll use in the recommendations, these are what, Peter, you were talking about is a sort of a design guideline. So these are guidelines the town can have in its zoning bylaw and it's helpful feedback for us to have so that we prioritize that when we list out all the guidelines. I hope you've had a chance to rank these. Moving on, because we have a lot to cover, we are now going to talk about Ash Street. So again, think about residential node now, context has changed. We identified that it would be still helpful to have mixed use in this area because it is helpful to redevelop properties, it's easier for developers to pencil it out and also small-scale commercial as it is now and ensuring that everything sort of conforms to the current zoning bylaw. So this, by, when we say encouraging mixed use, we are saying allow mixed use by special permit. Currently, it is not allowed. So that's one, and I, I'm not going to get into too much detail about mixed use because we have talked... we've talked about it a lot, but we have listed some of the advantages of the same, like leading to thriving businesses, increased revenues and job opportunities. And then, in terms of dimensional requirements, these are our proposals, and you'll see the ones in the red on the proposed side are the ones that we are considering proposing or drafting. The minimum lot size is, you'll see, extremely different from what it was before. From my understanding of the historical context through our outreach, I know that a lot of these parcels were developed before the current zoning, which has 55,000 square feet requirements. And so that made more than 95 percent of the parcels within all of the residential area within our study area non-conforming, because obviously, they were not 55,000 square feet of each. When we looked at the median or the average parcel within these residential area, we found that on an average, within the study area that we have, the residential parcels are about 15,000 square feet through our parcel analysis, through spatial mapping. And so we are suggesting we get back to 15,000, and that will basically make all the parcels within the node conforming, 100 percent conformity, and then it will also be a bit realistic for folks to consider redevelopment. Another change is increasing the building coverage moderately, I mean modestly, 20 to 30 percent. We are not suggesting changing the maximum height, which is 35 feet, which comes out to roughly 2.5 floors. We are suggesting front yard reduction, again, with the same aim, that if the development is closer to the street, it will be vital, it will increase vitality. So from 40 feet front yard, we are suggesting 10 feet. Same side yard, same rear yard, and reducing some of the open space requirements. If you would think about a 55,000 square feet parcel, 50 percent open space mix, like you could imagine it, it's a big green open space. But when you're thinking about a parcel that is actually existing, like the 15,000 square feet parcel that actually exists, or 20,000 parcel, square feet parcel that actually exists, open space around 30 percent actually builds and works cohesively with the government, with the development we are hoping to see. And along with those front yard, side yard, all those requirements, these, we have some pictures as we follow, these developments could look like they belong to this residential node surrounding it. So these are some of the dimensional requirements that we are proposing. Next question is again, a poll to give us any concerns, thoughts. Do you think this is good? Do you think it's too modest? Do you think we should go further? Should we pull back? Any response in the comment box? And of course, if you could give us whether you have concerns or not, just so that we have like a good idea of whether things we are proposing are working or not, and we have a good idea of temperature check. Yeah, go ahead.
So when you're talking about multifamily, is this specifically seniors? Or are we talking about families with children? Because like, this seems like a lot of multifamily use, and as we know, these schools can't handle this, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. I'm going to address it as we get to that point, since we are focusing on the dimensional requirements, and I'll make sure to circle back on that. Can we go to the next slide? Go ahead. Yeah. So again, same exercise. Please rank these pictures. Now, you'll see these pictures are at a different scale. Some of them are two floors, one and a half floors, two and a half floors, something that sort of aligns with what the current requirements are. And this is for mixed use. So we are not talking about residential development only. There are other types of mixed use also, like these are basically one building, but it could be just a storefront in the front and then residential at the back as well. But these are some pictures we saw. We would like to get a sense of height and design that you prefer. Some of them are way closer to, like B is very close to the street, near the sidewalk. But if you look at D, it's slightly back, further back in. So sort of designs that you prefer. And please rank those in order of your preference. So I think we should move on, and as you get, as you rank those. Okay, so now getting into some of the parking discussion. Ma'am, I'll circle back for sure as we get to that slide. But now, we want to talk a little bit more about, so there are these dimensional requirements that zoning bylaws have, minimum lot size, height, yard, but there's also a very key component, which is parking, which takes much, which takes much of the actual development that happens of the land area. And so this slide is about specifically RK Plaza, and we are saying we should reduce it a bit currently, and this is about the mixed use. Currently, the zoning bylaw says that all the parking that is required within a mixed use, all the, so for example, let's assume there's a residential and an office, both parking numbers should be basically summed or added, and that's the number of parking units that should be there in the development. And so we are proposing that based on peak demand and in general, so for example, in the mornings, folks leave in the residential area, in the residential part of the development, there's a lot of empty parking spots. And then, there's also the retail portion of the development that is seeing some cars because folks are coming in. We are suggesting sharing some of that, up to 30 percent in this case, but those numbers we can of course change. So here, we are saying 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit within mixed-use developments within the RK Plaza node, and 0.75 spaces for senior housing if that comes in, because seniors tend to drive less. And then, for commercial uses, having one parking space per 300 square feet, it's the same as what the zoning bylaw has, but we could include 30 percent of the residential parking spaces as the commercial parking space during the daytime. And that daytime, we have assumed 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but that could be 9:00 to 5:00 or according to the sort of, we'll have to sort of work through the details of this, but the idea of shared parking is something we want to bring up, to see if that resonates. It is obviously something that we have kept in mind here is to look at best practices. It is being used in many communities across greater Boston, and yeah, it has been a successful strategy. In existing context, if we look at just the residential housing, currently, the requirements are two, sorry, three spaces per dwelling unit for single or two-family. That's a lot of parking we are asking for a single family or a two-family, three parking spaces per dwelling unit. And then, for two, three, or four, for one, two, or three bedrooms, it just gets progressively higher. So for three-bedroom, we are requiring four parking spaces in a node where real estate would be extremely costly. So we suggest we share some of that with commercial and also lower it altogether as well. And since it's the same sort of strategy for Ash node as well, Ash Street node as well, but different numbers, of course. So we are suggesting parking requirement of two cars per dwelling unit. We are not talking about per bedroom. We are not talking about any specific type of dwelling unit. We are just saying two parking units per dwelling unit, parking spaces per dwelling unit. And we are suggesting reducing that to one parking unit per dwelling unit for seniors, again, because they tend to drive less statistically. And then, mixed use, the same thing about shared parking, per previous discussion. Okay, lot to go, so I'm going to slightly pick up the pace. This is, I think, the development that Cynthia was talking about, like this type of development that you see in the picture. And I think what we are getting at here is compact development. So making sure these buildings are oriented and together and clustered in a way that you can have some common space. It's not all spread throughout the lots in a way that is, that is too, that makes it very difficult for pedestrian ways to be carved out or others. So compact designs, creating walking connections between buildings are great, and that's something that we can encourage through design guidelines. Another, so this is for RK Plaza, as well as, if you go to the next slide, we'll get to this for Ash Street as well. But continuing with RK Plaza, another example we wanted to highlight on the left, you'll see the picture, is of a mixed-use development. The red portions are, like the lower, the ground floor of those red portions are commercial, and at the back, you can see there is residential. So thinking about defining, like what's permitted, what's prohibited, of course, and how those mixed-use developments can actually happen on ground. And then, thinking about setting limitations on the percentage of each use that is there. And this is getting to what Noreen was talking about and her comment. This will ensure that we get a development that actually has, actually does that we want, which is bring vitality to the street. So just an ATM kiosk as a commercial component will not do that. And so we are suggesting we require at least 60 percent of the street-facing ground floor to be commercial, and any such component must involve onsite employees. It should not be a kiosk or a vending machine or something similar, or even like a real estate office of the real estate that this housing development is, like not talking about those things. We're talking about something that will actually bring in for like a cafe or a boutique store or a hairdresser. So I'm going to, yeah, thank you. So again, continuing with RK Plaza node, another design standard that can help is activating street frontage by, again, similar vein, but this is about what's there on the street instead of the development itself. So asking the developers, project developers, to invest in the public realm here, because they are being given incentive of, say, mixed use was special permitted, but now we are giving it by right. So now, this is an incentive that they have. They can give back by additionally providing input to, and funding or investment or support for public improvements. And these pictures are some of those, like the one on the left picture has a bench in front of it where folks are congregating and sitting, and it's a lively place. On the other side, it's Canton Center. It's actually a slightly older picture, because now the utilities are buried in the ground in that area, but it's just not the building itself, but just the public realm aspect is what we want to talk about here. The building is not that pretty, but the green space, the clock, all these are, it's ADA accessible, there's a ramp there, a person in a wheelchair can go in. These are sort of improvements that we think we can ask the developer to do if we give them bonuses like users or density bonus. Going to the next slide. So everything I talked about before this was more about mixed use and design guidelines that can help with walkability and vitality. And so now, I'm getting into, this is about Ash Street, so the residential node, into expanding housing options at moderate densities. We've been talking about moderate densities for quite a while, but we wanted to share some of the technical backing to that. We analyzed, so on the left, the map that you see, the center of that is the area that we have identified as the node, and it's, that circle is 0.1 mile, has a 0.1 mile radius, which is roughly 500 feet. So in that 500 feet radius circle, we looked at all the residential properties and looked at what their parcel acreage was, and we found that the average dwelling unit per acre, the density is 2.3. So there are 2.3 units per acre. So this is the sort of context. If we go to the next slide, we are proposing that we allow two-family by right and multifamily by special permit at two dwelling units per acre in this area. So two dwelling units per acre is actually lower than what it currently has, which is 2.3 dwelling units per acre. We are not, we are not increasing height. We are mostly considering changes that will allow for more development than just single family, if someone has a larger parcel, but it sort of conforms with the surrounding area. The picture we have is not to show the density. We are not saying that there should be those many buildings in a parcel, and this is what it would look like at Ash Street. We actually wanted to talk about the front facade. So those buildings that you're seeing are two-family houses sitting side by side. That's, this is actually a development in Arlington, so we are not, the density is very different. This is not two dwelling units per acre. But we think that this is what it could look like with a larger parcel with more, maybe slightly more spaces between the developments. So detached townhouses, or detached houses or townhouses that Bill was mentioning could be one way, of course, there are more ways, and our design guidelines can incentivize this as opposed to others. Here, one more concept or one more sort of idea that we want to pitch, I want to include is the idea of density bonus. We give bonus to developers, and then they give us back investment and support in a certain activities, how it works. We are talking about density bonus of going up to four dwelling units per acre. So currently, we allow two dwelling units per acre, say, for example. The developer can go up to four dwelling units per acre if they support public realm improvement, if they increase pedestrian activity, connectivity, or pedestrian connections, and contribute to, say, the gateway improvement program that really people want as per the feedback that we have. So they can fund some of that work, because they have been given some of the density. Another incentive that we have done is the use change. So that's another incentive that they are using, and that can be the basis of asking them to invest into some things. So these are some ideas. These density numbers are based on our analysis, as I mentioned in the previous slide. We want to see if these make sense, if you have any thoughts about these, if these are, if you have any specific, I know the idea of imagining dwelling units per acre is hard, but if you have certain ideas about what the development can look like, it would be helpful to have those comments so that we can respond in this technical language accordingly. So feel free to input that. And ma'am, I think we are at that point where you wanted to talk about multifamily and senior housing. So I think there are two things. There are many strategies that we can do. It's, nothing is a silver bullet here. There are going to be many strategies that will get to the vision we want. One of the strategies is to allow private developers to build senior housing. Another strategy is to allow two-family by right and multifamily by special permit. When something goes to special permit, all considerations happen, including things like what pressure it will have on sewer, what pressure it will have on school enrollment, what pressure it might have on the traffic. There are all these considerations that sort of go into that discussion. So special permit is like a filter that will ensure that these discussions happen. One more thing I want to highlight, and this is a plug for the work that I, that our agency does, I'm from MAPC. MAPC has recently, as recently as last week, released a study about actually understanding what impact new housing has on school enrollments, and we have found that there is not a causation connection. Basically, it does not increase the school enrollment. It's not the increase in housing that is increasing the school enrollment, based on that research. I recommend that study, looking at that study, but as I mentioned, it's, there's a special permit process that will help. That, those parcels do have sewer, and those will get redeveloped based on the benefit they have in some way or the other. So it would be helpful to have some say in that by this process and guidelines and thoughts that we can put in advance. So now, we get into one more strategy again. This is a, this is a different strategy. Not all of these strategies can be implemented. This is an example. For example, if this is implemented, the other one kind of is moot. So this one is about adapting flexible development regulations. There's something called flexible development regulations inside Stoughton's zoning bylaw that already exists. These are the existing regulations. This is what it allows already. It allows by special permit through planning board, development of single family, two-family, or multifamily up to three dwelling units with 10 percent affordability component. This is something that's already there. Parcel should be contiguous and 10 acres minimum, and parking units are, and they have parking requirements. What we are sort of proposing, and this is based on the idea that these regulations have never been used, so there's a piece of regulation that exists that has never been used, which means that it needs more incentives to actually be used and benefit the town. We are suggesting We are suggesting that we move, we change those from 10 acres to five acres as minimum and allow multifamily with densities up to three dwelling units per acre, which is slightly different from what is actually the existing recommendation. Again, these are some things that it's still, and still remain by special permits. We're not talking about by right. We're still talking about special permit, but this will at least be, it will be a step in a direction of actually being utilized or maybe considered. Also, allow senior family, senior multifamily to be developed by private developers, something that we have consistently asked for. And then in terms of dimensional standards, we are saying we should reduce the front yard. It was 40, we are reducing it to 20. And then a few more changes. We have increased from 2.5 floors, which is 35 feet or whichever is lower, to three floors of 40 feet. So we are saying five more floors, but ensuring that, sorry, five more feet, but ensuring that we can still control the guideline. You'll not look like, you'll not look at a box building. You can still look at a pitched roof, you can still require gable roofs. It can still visually look like some of the buildings we like through the design guidelines, but it's a very modest increase to make the development feasible and pencil out. And then max building area, it was 20% and we have suggested 30. And then we've kept the open space requirement the same. So modest changes to a different dimensional standard to actually make it feasible for someone to develop. This is another strategy that could be adopted for meeting the goal that we have of expanding housing options. And we have very few minutes left, so please, in order to save time, please feel free to respond to this question, but I'd say we move along. Okay. Please take a few seconds to...
This will be posted and the link, the presentation, the questions are all posted.
Absolutely.
So you can, you can digest this tonight and then go and add any, any comments you want for the online survey.
And also like, right, like the last time, the survey was open for, I think, 20, 21 days. We'll make sure that this survey is also open for enough time so that folks have, if they think about something else, they can still respond. Okay, so I, last couple of slides. What will our report look, go ahead.
I'm just curious. So it sounds to me that maybe you want...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I may be misunderstanding you, but it sounds like you're building a lot of inexpensive housing.
I don't think that's the goal.
That's not the goal? It sounds that way. It sounds...
Particular, do you think, like, is it the dimension? What, what?
Let me in.
Go ahead.
No, I think it's, the zoning is allowing for diversity of housing type. No housing that is built right now, what did you call it again?
Inexpensive.
Inexpensive. There is no housing that's inexpensive right now. I can let you know that right now. There's, there's nothing inexpensive. The condos that are right over here, that are one and two bedrooms, are $435,000. So, so it's, it's not inexpensive, it's not cheap housing. It is looking at...
Who can move into that? If people are moving in, that's what, I just, I'm confused about what the intent is. Because if you build houses that are inexpensive relative, relative to the rest of the houses in the community, you expect people to move in and into those houses, which weren't there before, you're bringing in families, but at the same time, you're saying that the schools are not, are not going to be impacted. That just doesn't make any sense to me. You expect just to have, I know that the trend is that less people are getting married and less children are being born.
And you've got to realize...
Is that the intent?
And you have to realize that a lot of the development that is going on, like, no developer wants to build three-bedroom units, which are family units. You, we won't see one. They, they just don't come in. It's not the market, it's not what they're looking at. Part of this study is to look at some of these nodes, the RK area, the commercial node, which, and, you know, some of the, the Cliff Note version is, let's bring the commercial properties towards the street, create a street frontage, let's get the parking not in the, let's not have, let's not have a row of azaleas, 65 feet of parking in a building. Let's bring the building up, make street improvements and do those sorts of things.
It would make it look like the old, like the old town.
Correct. So that's some of the zoning. And also to allow for, when you talk about the old zoning, to allow for, if they want, to put residences above. Or they could do a small commercial frontage, parking, and then they could do, they could do residences in the back and create a, a little village area.
Right. I get that. Now, can I make a suggestion? Because I don't, it might already exist.
That's what this is about. This is about taking all your questions in.
I don't know if it already exists, because I don't know anything about city planning. But if there is, if there isn't, can you create a standard that says it's so many steps from this front door to this particular business, this particular business and that particular business? That way, you could get people, like older people, say, you know, it's only 25 steps to the laundromat or 25 steps to the cafe. I can do that, but I can't do 100. And that way, it would read, it would incentivize people to buy places where they can walk versus driving.
And a developer needs, and a developer needs to want to do that. And this also is incorporating something we don't have. As I tell them, I tell the planning board all the time, adding these design, adding potential design standards that they want to create, that gives the planning board one more tool in the toolbox to get you the type of development you want, not...
Do we want cluster development? Do we want homesteadified parking spaces per dwelling?
That's, that's for seniors, that's for senior development.
No, it's not, it's not one parking space per dwelling.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to let you know, I'm going to let you know, our parking requirement right now is extremely excessive. Four parking spaces for a three-bedroom unit.
Would you cut that, would you set back requirements?
The reason we're cutting the setback requirements are the front yard. It is...
Do you want the street plan space? Not the street plan space? No, just the, the store to be closer to the street so folks can access.
Right.
Do you have suggestions that you put in this study? I don't see anything that you suggested in this. This is totally different than anything.
I, I, I think some of the suggestions around dimensional regulations and density regulations actually reflect the input. For example, allowing two or three family, I think half-acre lot is what you mentioned is, is one of the comments that I remember. But I think the density that we are mentioning is two dwelling units per acre, which is, I think, complementary to what was suggested. But I, we are trying, we cannot, we cannot have all the things that were suggested incorporated and have everything be answered. But we are trying our best to do something that we think would be helpful, based on the feedback about the vision of it being vital, there being vitality about. And there are, there are properties, every property owner would like to maximize their, I'm sure you own, I'm sure you would like that for your property. So I...
Want to meet a three-story building. No, no setback requirements, no...
I don't think there's, we're not, we're, there are some setback requirements for the residential node. We have reduced more, we have reduced it to up to five feet in the RK Plaza node. So there are two nodes, and I think you were, I went over it earlier in the presentation.
And it's, the rear and the side yard setbacks haven't changed. Those, it's really, what we're looking at is creating a street frontage. So it's, it's, it's the, it's the front.
Do you think we would have that be on your street front?
I think it's 10, sorry.
Between five and 10 feet.
10 feet.
That's a city.
10 feet for Ash Street.
And, and, and that's along Park Street, not along, it's, you know, that's along that area. It's to create, it's to...
Only in a portion which is on Park Street.
The vision is to create the buildings up close, closer to the street, and not have the sea of parking and make it look like, you know, anywhere suburbia USA.
There's no change in the South Street. Or even the church right in front of it, only the portion which is close to the RK Plaza.
And 80% of the property along the corridor that's all zone residential, that doesn't change at all.
So you still keep the one acre house law?
We're not changing any parcels apart from these two nodes.
80, 80, 80% of the, the area is not changing at all.
But three back, would you put the zone in?
Yep. She said that upfront. She said that upfront.
Yeah. After, after the session, I'm going to come to you so that I can point it out.
Yeah, because the first part...
But we tried our best to incorporate everything.
Yeah, the first part, she went over that. So, and...
And I think we're done. I just wanted to use these two slides to show, so today we'll hear, and through the survey, we'll hear what you think about the recommendations. This is how our report could be structured. For the RK Plaza side, we could suggest a new mixed-use overlay, which basically does what some of the things that we were suggesting, or a new mixed-use zone, which can combine the GB and NB into one zone, but only for the parcels that are highlighted. Similarly, for Ash Street, we think of mixed-use overlay. So overlays basically allow for things that are in the overlay districts, like mixed-use that we are proposing. But the base zoning still stays. So that does not mean that anything that is existing is something that will not be allowed or will become illegal or anything of that sort. Another suggestion could be updating the flexible development regulations only within an overlay and adapting it. Again, we talked about that in the slides, and there's a lot of dense information, so I'll, I think it'll take a while to sort of go through it. Feel free to give your inputs through the survey. But these are sort of the things that we are getting at, and our report could get at what's the purpose of this zoning, definition, all these sort of things that go in as a standard zoning bylaw. And in the next slide, basically, we'll populate all the dimensional requirements, all the use requirements. Basically, we'll make it look like the zoning bylaw it is, like the tables and the content. But this is not currently filled, this will be filled after the input, what the permitting processes could be, what the parking requirements, design guidelines could be.
And one of the things that's centered through here in the, in our study that we looked at is, everyone talks about wanting senior development, senior housing. And under our code, a senior housing development can only be built by the housing authority, our zoning bylaw. That's it. And one of the things that we've heard by, in our outreach and different things, is, you know, that's very difficult, you know, the housing authority under the structure, you know, trying to finance it and those sorts of things, is to allow the flexibility for, you know, private development that allows, that requires, that does senior housing. So that's something that we are also considering and looking at.
And Cynthia is not here, but she mentioned a data point today that 16% of Stoughton has seniors, that comes to, I think, 5,000 seniors. There are, there's a long line of folks who could use a senior housing that is accessible, that is wheelchair-friendly, that is on the ground floor, that does not require them to sell all of their house, they can downsize, still maximize their property value, but at the same time, live in a comfortable space. So need for senior housing is grave, and I think it, some of these changes are, will help build more of that. So, yeah, some of the residential nodes are, and we think even the RK Plaza side could have it if it's slightly at the back. Store's still in the front, but there's enough pedestrian ADA-friendly access at the back with residences so that seniors can go to the grocery store or restaurants nearby. And I just wanted to respond that we, we cannot have steps, or, you know, what you mentioned of like, we can't require within 10 minutes, there, there has to be a laundromat or a grocery store. But there is a concept of a 15-minute neighborhood, which is any key thing that you need, like daily necessity, should be within 15 minutes. And in order to do that, we cannot, of course, control people to actually get, like, make them go to a certain space or a development, developer can't control, something like that. But we can encourage users that get to that. So making sure there is a way to have a grocery nearby. Or if it is not there, the things that are in our control are the zoning bylaw. How can the zoning bylaw or, say, economic development subsidies or other ways can actually incentivize that a grocery store locate close by? So maybe we can give them a subsidy for locating there as opposed to an automobile shop that might be already there, like if there are five gas stations in an area and there's more space, it would be better to have a sixth, a first grocery store instead of a sixth gas station. So we cannot control everything in, through that, but zoning can guide that development by incentivizing in certain ways.
And in summary, and we presented, or they presented, different strategies, different options, you know, maybe flexible development, looking at this, overall concepts for, you know, looking at the two dwelling units per acre, allowing for more flexibility for the, like the town, as, as we talked about, townhouse-style development, or, you know, you could do still in the node, traditional single family. You know, it's, and then adding design standards, looking at the senior development. These are all different strategies. We want your input on it, as I said, and your husband always says this, you're rezoning, nothing is written in stone. This is a study. We, we may decide not to do anything, or we may decide, oh, well, yes, let's look at this, this section, and let's look at this. You know, let's look at these sorts of things. You, you have the questionnaires, you know, you have the PowerPoints. They, in, in your notice that you received, most, did everyone get one in the mail? Okay. I have a very extensive and broad mailing list. Huh?
You didn't give me one.
No, I didn't. No, no, yes, I did, because you're a town meeting man.
It's the first time I got one. No, it's the second.
Oh, you're on, you're on the list, Peter.
I've got a few lists.
I know. You're, you're on the list. It's, it's 190 that I sent out. There's the link in that notice to, to the website that they have set up. This PowerPoint will be on there and the survey will be on there, any kind of comments that you have on those sorts of things. As far as fair housing goes that you mentioned, you can't deny, if, as residential is allowed, and residential is allowed now, you, you can't deny a development because it's going to increase schools. And as, and, and I think that maybe she can put the link for the study that MAPC did. A lot goes in, you know, it's not intuitive. You think, oh, well, all these residences are built, it's going to increase schools. You know, a lot of the residences being built don't have kids. They don't build three families. Your traditional single family, you know, typically has more kids than these mixed-use developments. They just, they just do. So if you want to advocate to stay the way we are and build nothing but single family, then you're, then you have a higher likelihood of increasing schools. I'm not going to advocate, I'm not going to advocate one way or the other. I'm just kind of telling you my professional opinion and what my colleagues see. I'm sure Noreen can, who was former planner here, and she's a planning consultant, would tell you the same thing. A lot of these types of developments that we're looking at, you know, are more geared towards the younger professionals and, and hopefully, if we can potentially change the regulations to allow private development to do senior housing.
I'll make sure to link that in our project webpage so that folks can just go to the project webpage and that study will be accessible. I highly encourage you to look at it, and I'm happy to entertain any questions related to it.
So...
Please reach out if you have...
You're past seven o'clock, so let's try to limit it. We don't want to be here too late.
So I, I think what happens is, a lot of people are nervous about this chat in general because they've seen what has happened through the town. because they've seen what has happened through the town over the years. Zoning has changed, things have been slipped in. There was a development not too far from my house. It was an over 65 development when it first came in. It was a 40B project, and it got to the point, they sold X amount of units, and then it stopped because, first of all, their price. Then what they did was they lowered the requirements, they got rid of the 65 and over thing. And I don't know if they sold any more houses or not, but I think what you actually have in front of you, the key thing would be Ash Street. You have a dilapidated building, you have an abandoned building. And I think what you have to do as planning or development, get a builder in there, have them come up with some type of idea, and you see work with him to change the zoning for that lot. Now, if it becomes a real...
That's spot zoning. You can't do that. That's our problem.
No, but...
So, and one of the things, we've talked to developers and builders, and you do, it is not good planning practice to change the zoning for a specific development or a specific developer. It's good planning practice to look at allowing a diverse, as I keep on saying, the toolbox, allowing you as a planning board member, the diverse toolbox to allow for a developer, if they wanted to develop a traditional neighborhood commercial, strip commercial with parking, they could do that. But if you could also add in that, let's say, the neighborhood commercial two-zone that allows, oh, well, if you put the building close to the street, you know, with an attractive street frontage, the parking in the back, and oh, by the way, you know, if that doesn't pencil out, you know, oh, you could do a second-floor residential to make that building and make that pencil out. So it allows for, I've just told you, it allows for four different types of developments, that allows for, within one zone, with design standards.
And I just want to add, like, we are talking about zoning, which is one of the things that contribute to a development actually happening. Other things are real estate trends, whether the developer will actually end up getting profit, things like that. And that, currently, we see a mixed-use development which has a residential component helps with development of the commercial because the developer gets the profits through the residential component. But if you take the residential component out fully sometimes, the commercial itself feels not as profitable, and so you would not attract development there, which is the reason why Particity Lot or other lots, such lots, could be empty for so long. Because there is an opportunity, and that small real estate, commercial development is allowed currently as part of the zoning that it has. But it's not happening, because it's not able to attract a developer that can pencil it out or actually see any value in investing so much. But the kind of suggestions that we are giving will hopefully attract that, but at the same time, we'll have the control of what that will look like. It should not be a tall building, it should not be very far out, it should not be just parking, a sea of parking in front, things like that.
What is that actually zoned for? Just business?
General business.
It's...
It's zoned, it's, I think it's general business. It's zoned general business.
So what you're saying is you cannot do mixed-use there?
As a special permit.
Okay, so getting back to what I originally said, if you get a builder on board that through a special permit, you could aid him getting through...
Right. And some of the changes allow for even greater flexibility and design standards. Let's not have the sea of parking in the front. Let's do these sorts of things. And in the scenario proposals for that area, you know, and we know it's the old Pisonis and whatever, that's one of the areas, Marmaxx.
Right. In order to, in order to get through what you want to get through, that's the first, if you could develop that the way you want to develop it, I think you would see a lot more open response to what you're trying to do. That's all.
Right. And I think, I think we want to, I'm going to have them look at more detailed examples of a development of what the zoning we're proposing, what the zoning they're proposing, and the scale of that property. That's what, you know, I've told them, they need to look at that. And, because a picture tells you a thousand words in saying, look, in XYZ community, it's this about the same size, very similar road, here's what they did. This is what we want to do. And I think we've, with this presentation, added the photo examples. This is the public realm things. This is the type of, this is what the three and a half stories looks like. This is what the two and a half stories looks like. So we've already started, put that in the presentation, and I think we're going to look at diving down a little deeper after this on some specifics.
Yep.
Okay? Yes, ma'am, here.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand, when you're talking about, like, not having the sea of parking, so, because RK Plaza is the sea of parking, so like, are you going to destroy that and build like a whole new? Is that what you're saying?
Great question, good point to clarify. What is existing, we cannot change, like, we can't make it illegal by zoning. We can, in the future, if the...
Like the grass between the sea of parking and the church, that is in this zoning?
Yes.
And that's where you're saying that you would do this, right?
Yes, yes, that strip, right.
Actually, it would allow for whenever, there's a life cycle of every development. There's a life cycle, you know, you drive through communities and you say, oh, that, you know, used to be a very thriving plaza, and now it's not. It's got, it's got a liquor store and a church where the grocery store used to be. You see those. I drive by one every day, so I see it. And you're like, you're waiting for that plaza to be torn down. There's a life cycle. And we're looking at a long game here for, you know, the life cycle is going to be a long time for that. But at some point in some of these things, it will, and when somebody wants to redevelop it, having these incentives and having these things, hopefully, we won't have the church and the liquor store, you know, in the building that just, and a vape shop and a nail salon. You know, those seems like, you know, they all go to, right, I, and I think you understand, you see the plazas that are, RK Plaza is thriving, it's relatively new, you know, the life expectancy, the Panera and everything, but the life expectancies are, you know, 25, 30 years. And you know the plazas I'm talking about, you drive through, you see them, where they've reached that life expectancy. And so, you know, do we want to repeat that? No. I would, you know, in the future, you know, let's allow for these mix of uses. Let's try to pull the buildings closer to the street, put the parking, it's visual. You know, they'll still put a lot of parking behind the building, which is the entrances. And then, but also, we have some real-life examples of, you know, maybe changing this neighborhood zone over on the Ash Street side. You know, we have those two eyesores, and they're clearly, the general business that's there, no one wants to rebuild a commercial there, building there. So let's allow some flexibility and design standards to maybe look at commercial and multifamily or townhouse development or second-story, you know, those sorts of things. You know, let's look at allowing A, B, C, and D, you know, within a zone, under a special permit, not by right, but under a special permit, with design guidelines, to try to incentivize and create the development that we want to see. Every meeting I've had on here, people say, you know, we need to take over those two properties. And I'm like, you know, we're not in the business of taking over properties. It has to be, it has to be really, really bad.
And...
Yes, it has to be really, really bad. So that's what, that's what some of this is about. And I think some of the study revealed that a vast majority of the area and the frontage along there, it's, the existing single-family is not going to change it. It's the, you know, obviously, the golf course is not going to change. I think we looked at it and we were like, you know what? There's some opportunity here up on the, up by the Brockton Line for stuff for the future. And the Ashley Street, and I'll give you a minute, the Ashley Street section, there's, what, five or six acres that are vacant across the street, and there's two derelict buildings. So, and nothing's going on. So we're looking at, you know, flexibility on what they can do. It's not a density that's going to allow a high-rise apartment complex, the two to four, four units per acre, you know? You know, you go to any quaint New England downtown and four units, that's a 7,500 square-foot lot. You go to any of these quaint New England towns and you drive through the center and you go, oh my God, I would love to look and live in that gambrel. And you're like, ah, they're on a 7,000 square-foot lot, you know? So, you know, so it's, we're not proposing massive, the zoning that's, and the potential densities are, they're still low. You know, four units to the acres, low.
It's the same as the surrounding area, as our analysis pointed. Ma'am, I just wanted to, I brought that map up to show the church parcel. So you'll see that most of the church property, which is zone residential, will stay residential, only part which is GB close to the residential, to RK Plaza, only that portion is included in the...
Grass.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's actually, the church is split in terms of zoning. It has GB as well as the residential zoning.
The blow owns the church, so we control that grass, right?
To what we allow in that mixed-use.
I don't know, I don't have the exact ownership, so I don't know. I assume it is.
It is fully owned by one owner.
And one of the things...
The property itself is two different zones.
And one of the things that we've looked at is, I think the zoning is making sure that the zoning, any residential, the existing residential zone, we make sure we pull it down to about, below your house where the parking lot starts. That, I will guarantee you, I already know that. I wouldn't, you know, it makes sense. And so that's already, anything we do. The one thing that's not here that we're going to add is that one triangle of industrial that's below your house, borders South Street.
Which is currently office.
There's the two offices and the auto body, the three properties. There's no reason that needs to be zoned industrial, so...
Because then users which are industrial can come in. That's not combined, good for residential.
So we're going to look at, the proposal would be looking at changing that to either the neighborhood business or whatnot, because that's what the uses are. There's no reason it needs to be zoned industrial nowadays. And that's just, that's a house cleaning issue. And you had a question.
Well, I just had a vision. I've been down to, I've been down to the villages in Florida, and they have these quaint little ice cream shops, and it's all incorporated with single-family houses and, so, little paths that you could follow with your golf cart. But there's also a vision of little shops like down the Cape, where they have the quaint little storefronts and touristy things. There's a big, as far as multifamily housing is concerned in that area, there's already several multifamily units from, in Brockton that are, have overwhelmed the area, so as far as...
And we're not looking at that scale at all. And I think what, it's a lovely vision, I really like the idea of what you painted. In the current zoning that we are proposing, the stores, small quaint little storefronts, which I hope those users can be attracted there, and we get proposals, for example, for development, that, plus at the back, which is a very deep parcel, could have clustered single-family or two-family townhouses with pedestrian ways. We're not talking about a building which is multifamily. It could be two-family, like we have pictures in the presentation, clustered around at the back of the parcel, storefront in the front, maybe parking in the middle so that the retail can have parking. So I hope that some of this can respond to the, and we, I just want to note that we are 20 minutes over time, so, but I really appreciate all of you coming here. I was hoping we could take a picture together, if that's okay. I, we would love to include that in our report.
Yep.
And I would love to remember. So if we could do that, that would be wonderful, only if you're okay with being included in the report that way.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Yes. What is the bill?